Look at the agenda. We're not going to approve or disapprove of the agenda because this is just a work session meeting, but I would like to move one topic to the front that actually's not on this particular one. Mr. Steve Anderson has got a subject he'd like to bring forth real quick. He has talked to us, he's talked to 911, to Richard Augburn. This what you have in your hand is the standard operating procedure for 911 that's been in effect, you know, for 20 years. It's right down, y'all can read number two and number three, and I'm not going to read it to you. Y'all can kind of look at what it is. And then I'm going to let Mr. Anderson, if you will, let us know what he's trying to do and if we can come up with some sort of solution to your problem.
Sure, and I'll try to make this short and sweet. Steve Anderson, I've been a resident of Pickens County for 40 years. It's not...I gave a piece of property to my daughter, and this has caused the problem, to build for my daughter and my granddaughter to build on the property. I've got a map. So when I, actually, unless you guys don't know me, I'm the owner of Georgia Mountain Forestry Service. Jerry knows me. Well, I don't hold that against you, but good to go. GMF Properties and Georgia Mountain Lodge. So I'm building, even though some people call me, because I'm from Florida. A...whatever. It's a...this is a whole thing of simplicity. When I built my house 20 years ago, I was given the address of 344 Turner Road. Now, what happened is the property I bought was landlocked, so I didn't...I went to Jim Dawson, who owns the...God, shut up.
Now, we don't...
I know where you're at, Anderson.
Okay.
Y'all know the situation?
Thank you, my legal advisor.
And what happened with Jim, he agreed on a 30-foot easement to get into the property. Now that my daughter, son-in-law, and granddaughter are wanting to build on it, they want to change the address of everybody's property on...and if I can explain it to you, I will.
Well, what's going on, guys? Since he's got Turner Road, when you come down Turner Road, there's a driveway off the left there where Jimmy Dawson's other house used to be. He sold it a few years ago. There's a road turned off to the right down there with mailboxes on the road. With the procedures that we've got at 911, when you've got three or more residents on a driveway, then the road has to be named. I believe that's correct by reading this right here. There's three, in theory, there's three residents already on that driveway. He wants to put a fourth when it comes down to it.
Well, the third was mine that was approved by 911.
Right. And you can, but to make a long story short, there are three residents on that driveway. And so he would like to see if we could possibly do something to go to a fourth, or if there's something he could possibly do without changing the addresses. I don't...I'm up for suggestions to that point.
Rob, all it took was a phone call from you to Christie at 911, and that's all it took. And that makes the most logical sense.
Yeah, it would if I was still sole commissioner. Because I'd be...
You've already explained that to me.
Yeah. So, but since I have two other board members, I've got to...that's what I'm trying to explain to them. Because I don't get to talk to them unless we're in a...
I understand.
So that's where he's at.
And what we would like to do, and let me throw a little thing in the...are you looking at the photograph?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The ones that, that's Aaron and Mary Morgan, they're in their 90s, and their property joins Turner Road. And to make them change their address at this point is ridiculous. And also, Helen Ralph Coleman's house was right around the corner. That was grandfathered in before I even bought the property and got the 30-foot easement. So therefore, I'm saying that let's leave it Turner Road and not make these people change their address.
So this is, am I understanding this right? It's off of Turner Road. You take a left off of Turner Road.
I'll take a right.
I'm sorry.
Right across from the Oaks.
But the addresses are Turner Road.
Right. And our mailboxes are sitting on Turner Road.
Oh, okay.
The postal, the US Postal Service will not go down my driveway.
Okay, so the boxes are all on Turner Road?
They're sitting on Turner Road. So all it takes is to name an address to my daughter's house and put another mailbox out there. It's so simple. Why do we even waste our time on this?
And based on this, is there any way we could do it, the way he's suggesting?
The issue you've got is for fire protection or ambulance service. That's where it's all, I think that's where it's all deriving from, isn't it?
Yes.
Is ambulance and fire service. If there was a way that the road could be, or the driveway and the mailbox could be renamed, not renamed, but some sort of flag to say that, you know, these four houses...because when they shoot down the driveway to find some, heaven forbid, they have a problem down there, they need to know which house to swap when they go down the driveway.
Can I interrupt, Robert?
Sure.
When you pull into my driveway, there is a big sign that says Anderson, duh-duh-duh, and it shows everything that goes with it. And so safety is not a concern. I think...
Unless you have a tornado or something, there's no sign left, yes.
The, and I think the thing a little binding is the fact that over the years, this goes in, this went in effect like over 20 years ago, I think, what you had put right here. How many individuals have you had to live up to this in the last 12 years?
I looked at this morning, and the ones I could see just off the top of my head was about 10 in the last five years that we've had to change for the same reason.
What does that matter with simplicity? This is what's wrong with politics. It makes it so simple to just say, "For 22, for 23 Turner Road."
On that driveway, it's 400, or 300, 341, or 342. There's like a big skill from the addresses on that same driveway.
Could it not be named Turner Road Extension?
There's already a Turner One.
Oh, okay.
That was out there. We're going past it.
Guys, let me simplify this. I don't want my elderly neighbors to have to change their addresses at this point. If I have to, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. It doesn't make any sense, but I'm fine with it. But to make them do that at this point in their life makes no sense.
So what you're...
When their property joins Turner Road.
So what you're saying is the elderly ones leave their addresses, whatever that is, Turner Road, and you would change yours?
No, I want to keep it.
Oh, I'm sure you would, but I'm trying to come up with a solution to the problem.
Is there's the first house on the road, on that driveway?
There's the first house on the driveway.
Yes, and Jerry, you can relate to this. As in the timber business, the least accesses into the road are the better. You don't want four accesses. So, and Rob, you asked me, can we build another driveway? Well, that doesn't make any sense because we can control one driveway and have it controlled and have gravel and nice. And the least accesses into the property are the best. So it just, it's so simple to maybe just to name it something...
Christie, are you here?
Yeah.
And you agreed to that.
To do what now? To name it a different name, or what?
No, so name it. I'm going to negotiate. I would like to just name it her address on the building apartment as Turner Road, because that's where it's at. You throw another name in it, then you're going to get in the, in the black water, and the heck is Quail Way, you know? But everybody knows where Turner Road's at. So it's, Christie, am I right on that?
We're going to tell people that it's Quail Way off of Turner Road. It's built into the 911 system, and then gets passed on to Google Maps and MapQuest and all those in time.
Here's what I would propose. Give my daughter an address for her building or met at whatever they chose, choose it to be, but on Turner Road. It's so simple. So, guys, y'all make your decision.
Well, they won't be able to make a decision today. That decision won't be made in the next Thursday. I just want to be sure we all discussed it before we could come up with a, try to come up with a solution to the issue.
What is the issue?
Problem? Well, the issue is, I've got, we're trying to come up with this, Steve, to get by, because we've already made, Pickens County over the years have already made a group of individuals live up to this structure that we have here for public safety. That's what it's about, public safety. If we can come up with a different solution that doesn't screw this up, yet comes up with a better argument to the fact that we might be able to help you out with something. That's what I'm trying to come up with.
Simplicity. What, and what sounds to me, you're trying to dodge offending other people that have done the same thing.
I don't call it dodging or offending. I call it trying to live up to the recommendation that was set forth 20 years ago that we already made other individuals live up to.
Well, my property was there before 20.
I understand, but Steve, I'm trying to work something out here, you know, and if we can't, we can't. But at least I want the other two commissioners to know what we're trying to accomplish and bring this thing forward, if we can come up with another solution to the problem.
What do the other commissioners have to say about it?
Well, they just have found out about it, so I don't know if they've had time to think of it.
Can they make a comment on it?
I would ju, yeah. I would just like time to study it, so to speak, and ride down there and actually physically look at the road and then make a decision. Like you said, we can't vote anyway.
No.
That would be my thoughts.
Jerry?
Same thing. I mean, this is the first time I've seen it without really getting on the ground and looking how it's going to affect. If it looked like it's going to be the way it's supposed to be, you know? You've got, you're worried about your neighbor changing their, their address and all that. But I need to look, get video, see what it, see what it looks like from the ground.
Would it, would it work, Christie, to the neighbor, the elderly neighbor, leave their address alone, but maybe have Steve and them change theirs? Would that work?
I'll be all in favor of that when we get this done right now.
Yeah. Would that, well, this they stay. But would that work to that point that we can make?
If they're the first house that you come to on that driveway?
It is. The elderly neighbors are the first house on the right.
But there's also the other that Jim Dawson owns that would need to change theirs on down the driveway.
Jim Dawson doesn't own anything on there, Christie. Jerry...
Jerry, I'm sorry.
Jerry Dawson, yes. Is there other, is there more residents on down that same driveway? Other than the three, three or four that we're talking about?
Jerry owns the property that you can see in the field right there.
Okay.
And...
All right.
And get on back for the dotted line.
Yeah.
This is so simple, we don't need to waste time.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming in. We will, you two can check it out and let Lisa know that I may be expedite something if we can get this thing further on, get something turned around. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
You're more than welcome.
Pretty good, Eric.
Hopefully we can work something out quickly, how that...
I'll change the name, but I want to show, is you guys give Mary and Mary Morgan the right to keep their address.
That's what, that's what I was asking the crew back out. If they're, if they're the first outs on the right, and their, and their property is bordering Turner Road, if possibly, if it would work to leave their address the same, and it maybe works with you guys to change it, whatever y'all want to, at that point, and that would work for you?
That would work for me.
All right. Leave these, let's let the other two commissioners take a quick look at it, and then maybe they can give me the direction on which we need to go proceed on.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. All right. Do you stay with the whole meeting, or?
Oh, I'm trying to stay.
All right. Department updates. Who wants to go? Well, you got to, it's a plan. Fay, you got the, what you got going? Let's go from the front to the back.
Okay. I got my draft of the audit on Monday, and I'm looking it over and seeing the part that I have to do, the management discussion and analysis part. So I'll get that back to them tomorrow, and the auditors are going to present it the next year. It's due to the state by June 30th, so...
The next meeting, like next Thursday?
The next commissioner's meeting, yes.
Okay.
About two weeks.
Two weeks from today. Okay.
Yes. So we should have our presentation in, once finalized.
All right. Any other questions for Fay?
Does it look good? Everything looks fine?
All right. Philip, you're up to bat there, son. Let's go.
For May, we said eight meters again. We're rolling, everything's booming. We've had several wells go dry, and I'm afraid there are going to be more coming forth when, you know, the summer comes on. We've been working around the shop a lot, getting cleaned up, getting things cleaned up during the, all the rain, so it's looking much better over there. Jones Mountain, we've got 2,700-foot well. As of this morning, hopefully today they might get, it's slow go because we're, you know, vacation season, as we call it. And hopefully get about 1,000 foot today, so roughly middle of next week we should be done barring the rain. No Monday, there's like a 70% chance of rain.
When you, when you get this thing completed middle of next week, what's the process of getting watered out line and getting the PD approval?
All we have to do is fill it up, flush it, pump test it for two hours, and then chlorinate it, let it sit for 24 hours, and take it to Cherokee County and get it tested. And once we get the test back, we send the results to Turner Seed, and they send them to the EPD.
Have you talked to Gilmore County, see what their, their...
I'm trying to call, last I heard they were still waiting on finalizing their loan, other grants. But I'm going to call Jason, which is under Jerry McVey.
Jerry McVey, yeah.
And talk with him and see where he, see what he knows and what he's had. If he don't know, then I can call Jerry. So we should hopefully be there middle of next week waiting on him.
Okay, you've got one meter, and then you got the, where Donny's got the training area, pretty good. Set a meeting for that also.
Yeah, we will, we'll set the meter, or do the service tap, but we won't set the meter until we get the, all the test results and everything back. As soon as we get it back, we'll turn it on and make the, make the hydrant hot and get the GPS coordinates for Christie.
Yes.
Because she keeps up with them, and then hopefully within the next couple of months, see if we can work together and do the GIS with Roy. And later on this winter, I'm going to GPS all of our meters and valves. That way we've got everything on GIS. That's, that's the goal for the winter, because it, you know, tends to slow down a little bit.
Sloan, you gonna need some of that for what you're going to be up in the next few weeks? Okay. Soon as you can turn that around, or at least give them, give them the information you've got so far on the rest of the county.
Well, as soon as we get done with the, with the line on Jones Mountain, I'll go GPS them.
Okay.
And then that way it gives them time to put them in, and that, in between getting everything filled up and flushed out.
Do we need 911 addresses on those fire hydrants also? Or will GPS be enough?
We've been getting 91, or on the previous ones, we've got 911 addresses too, but I don't know what Christie and Sloan wants to do this time.
It doesn't matter. I can use the GIS to put them on the mountain.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can do that then. Because it's, it's a little bit more of a process to go out and 911 all every hydrant. I mean, yeah, it's nice to have, but, you know, we're going to do the GIS, and all you have to have is your GPS.
Are all the fire hydrants we got in county already 911 addressed?
I think majority, some of them are, but I think 99% of them are GPS.
Okay.
With that being, without Jones Mountain. Because every time we get done with one, or the project, I GPS the fire hydrant.
All right.
Uh, May 23rd, we went up to Chatsworth and looked at, looked at a package plant, 500,000 gallon day package plant for Grandview. And I've got, you know, there's some questions about it, but Chris with Turner Seed, he's putting numbers together to see what it would be worth, because we would have to buy a lot of new, new equipment, and to see if it'd be worth buying just a new package plant or buying this one and, you know, upgrading. And I talked to him Monday, and he's still working back with that, I can't remember the gentleman's name that was up there from that company.
Yeah, I've got his card.
Head or something, but he's still, they're still working to getting the prices for us to see if it's, it's feasible, what's feasible.
And that plant was put in, what, 2002?
2002, and it hadn't been run in, hadn't been run since '12.
Two and a half years of runtime, I think, that's got. Two and a half years of runtime.
So, and that's, that's about it?
Yeah.
And you want me to report for Johnny?
Yeah, go ahead while you're on the roll.
Johnny said before that we've signed for Irma, the category A and B. We signed for category Z, May 30th. I talked to Latoya with FEMA. The estimated amount that we're going to get for all threes are hundreds, right around 165,000. And it's going to be broke up in three different, three different checks. There's category A, B, and then DAC, which is the direct administrative cost. There ain't no money been obligated out yet for that, so they're still waiting on, I think they told me that they're waiting on the direct administrative cost to come in. Big Canoes having their annual table talk scenario, 27th and 28th, I think it was.
I think it was.
And we'll go up there and sit in on that. So, but other than that, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Kim, what you got for us?
Not they don't paving. Johnson Paving, who was awarded our L-Meck contract. They started paving around the Hunter's Ridge area, putting all those roads in there. And after that, they'll be moving down to Little Avenue, Nellie Drive, and all that off South Main Street.
And they're going to go from Hunter's Ridge then to Jasper Lumber Cup area?
Yeah, they're going to do Jasper Lumber Cup first, and then they'll be moving down to, like I said, Little Avenue, Nellie Drive area. And then from there, you know, they've still got to do Hickory Cove, the area around Grandview and Lake Shore Drive, and high road in Montombburg Lane now off 53.
There are 62 roads, I think, on that list. And then also, we're working on the next list for next year. And finishing up, going to be finishing up on the tentative list for that, give you guys a copy of that, and then we can tweak it in before we get everything set up for next year.
Kim, I have a question. On Facebook, on our government website, there were some questions on the paving. Does Natasha get in touch with you with those questions?
Natasha did.
Okay, I'll, I'll get with you on that.
Okay.
Nothing urgent. I'll just get with you.
And Griffith Road off of Cove Road, we're going, we're planning on doing that hopefully next week if everything works out.
Okay.
We'll be doing that in-house.
Yeah. And also, speaking of in-house, 62 roads that are on the list were just what we had on the contract. Kim's still going to be doing roads other than that in-house. And Griffith was, was one of them that's going, we're going to do in-house. We're going to try to finish up on Pettit, where we had that little small section between Upper Salem or Salem and Pettit, where we had to widen the road out there. We finally got the homeowners to give us the property, and then they, I had to vote with some power lines out of the way, so we were never getting there. So you're working on it as we speak?
We're working on Pettit Road now. We probably, we got a little behind from the rains last week, so we like about a week on Pettit Road getting that widened out. And then we'll finish, you know, that little short section paving in that we didn't get last year.
Okay.
We finished at the Tate Depot last month, and we wound up hauling 740 pounds of dirt in there to build that parking lot up. Got it gravelled, and we've got grass and everything growing on the slopes. And it come out real well.
It looks great.
Yeah.
Why have you got grass to throw down there? Because we tried for three years.
Yeah.
What kind of grass did you grow?
Fescue.
Fescue, yeah. I would suggest less for the season in the future, maybe, especially in summer months.
Right. Well, water seems to help a lot. We had all that hydrogen. We had 18 days of rain, so that sprung it to life.
Also, we had talked about striping. We got Grandview Road striped last week. And also, we got Monument Road striped, re-stripped. And other than that, we're mowing, a little behind on mowing still, all the rains and everything. We're mowing every day, trying to get caught up, scraping, droweling, work borders, and mow stuff.
Have you got any, did everybody get, drop that date with school starting?
I was first, I think.
Is it only October for kids?
Obviously.
You're going to have everything ready by August 1st?
Yeah, hope to.
All right. Anything else?
That's about it.
All right. How's Human Resource doing there, Mr. Wallace?
Everything's fine.
Wow. How many other, how many other departments do you want to run? Any insurance issues? Everything's going pretty good? Look Ross Blue Shield hasn't pulled nobody's contracts or that good stuff?
No, definitely seems to be okay.
All right. Richard? I'm sorry. Curtis, you got anything?
No, we're fine. Just continuing with normal stuff in the Fire Marshal's office, looking at new, new drawings for new buildings and trying to do our annual inspections.
All right. And I'm assuming you'll be getting with the school system, or you're, whoever's going to be taking your...
Yeah, Shane, Shane, Kyle, and myself will be looking at the, the school systems and looking at the changes they're doing with the grade levels and stuff, and making sure that we're good to go for our annual inspections for the schools.
All right. Richard?
Planning commission Monday. We'll meet at 6 o'clock, and there are a couple of rezonings. So of course, that's, you know, a public meeting, public hearing. Anybody's welcome. New development for single-family homes continues to increase. As an example, in May, there were 14 building permits for new homes, and that's a definite increase. Same time last year in May, instead of 14, May 2017, there were only six permits issued. And subdivision construction continues. We don't have any brand-new subdivisions proposed, but some of the old pre-recession subdivisions that died, they've come back to life and continued. Bethany Morings Development continues. Jordan's Crossing, Little Creek Farms, Monument Falls, Outback, Salaco Highlands, and the Village at Oak Creek. And then on the commercial side or institutional side, the headquarters improvement project for Amicolo MC continues. And then if y'all get a chance to go out 108, to look at the Shark Mountain Business Park, there's some good development going on in there. A business called Mitigate that is restoration-type work. And so that's a new 6,000-square-foot building right at the entrance that you can see from 108. Then a larger building, about 17,000 square feet at the back of the Shark Mountain Business Park for shallow holding. Then a larger building, about seventeen thousand square feet at the back of the Shark Mountain Business Park for shallow holdings, also known as Magnum Contracting. They're coming up and gonna have a lot of their operations from Kennesaw to here in Pickens County. And so that will be a very good addition. And other than that, things are going well.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we're just gonna drop down to them to an Amlet Three Mount bids. Mr. Elrod, you wanna give us an update on that?
Yeah, um, we ended up getting three back on the, we done this on Tuesday, the fifth. They had to be back in. We ended up getting three, as y'all can see, on there. I even kinda put where they were based out of, one of them being based out of Arkansas and then the one in Georgia and the one out of North Carolina. I do have some concerns on the, on the top one at Arkansas. That's the ones that we have actually had side windows fall out. They got the contract a few years ago whenever we got rid of the Chevrolets.
Yeah.
And so they won the contract to build the whole truck.
Okay.
And the box. And we actually had, both our side windows came out of the boxes and the seats were falling apart.
How were they, how were they doing with their warranty work?
It's been a struggle. We just now got the windows and the windows fell out probably a year and a half ago and we're just now getting the windows to replace it. We've had Plexiglas windows.
And that's the company name of Taylor May?
Yes, so I've got some concerns there. Now, I do actually know this James Olson. He was not with the company before. He was with Peach State Amlets, which we've done business with for years and years and years until they kinda went out of business. He was the owner. But now he's on the sales side of it, so I am familiar with him. And after our meeting the other day, he was, they were actually the only ones that showed up for the, the bid opening. He says anything that has not been fixed, he's, he's gonna fix it. So that's an option, but I still have concerns about the work that was done before and how long it took to, to make it happen. And is James gonna leave next week? I don't know.
When you get that equipment from Arkansas, do we have to take it back to Arkansas to get it worked on or do they come out here and fix it?
James is saying that he, he actually has a bunch of Tyrone's that will actually fix it, is what he was saying at the bid opening.
And Sloan, where is, where is the one from Georgia?
It's, they're out of Woodbury.
Where?
Woodbury. And they're actually the ones that are familiar with our new color scheme too. They're the ones that done, that want them live, that want it lifestyle.
So then you got down there Jimmy Gill Custom Works, he's at Georgia, where, where abouts he at?
He's in Woodbury.
That's the one in Woodbury?
Yes, sir.
And then of course you got the one in North Carolina. Ain't many of them left around, are there?
Nope. And then.
You'd hope I did that, be cranked back up again. The, uh, Taylor May's got the best, best prices, but if we're not gonna warranty the work. And, and Custom Works, is your only company left in Georgia? Give bids for names.
Yep. They get, they, they returned one.
Yeah.
We, we actually sent five bids and only got three back.
Okay.
So these are the three that we got back.
All right. Any other you got going on?
Didn't, was able to make it by the Corlent Road Station yesterday. And they were pouring the concrete. They had three concrete trucks in there. I have not made it by there today to actually see exactly what they've done. I done it first thing that morning. We were doing some hose testing all day yesterday.
Okay.
And I've got hose testing pretty much the rest of the day. So may not make it back out there today either, but I'll, as soon as I can, I'll give you all an update on them. I would, I would say it was poured though. There were three concrete trucks pouring in and out when I was, when I pulled up about seven-thirty yesterday morning.
All right. Anything else you got?
Really about all that's going on for the most part.
All right. Christie, you got anything?
No.
Good. Tucker?
All is well.
Boy, you're optimistic. All right. That brings us down to, uh, I had taken on here a little over a month, well, it's been longer than that, about two months ago for shingles for the, for the library. They had a leak back on the back section. That was fixed by a company coming in and mediated the, the leak, got it all fixed, got it sealed up. But we've got some problems. The shingles on that, that roof has never had shingles since the library was built back in, god, when was the library built? Ninety, it was under Don Longak's administration, been a few years ago. Anyway, I just went, took the liberty to get some, get some quotes from around here. And you can see the quote, everything from, from Global Restoration, Fowler Homes, Dynamic Installations, AW Contracting and Fountain Roofing. Global thirty-eight four ninety-nine sixty-three, Fowler Homes thirty-two five thirty-five ninety-five. Dynamic Installations LLC thirty-two four ninety-five. AW Contracting twenty-nine three eighty. And then of course Fountain Roofing at twenty-nine thousand one twenty-five fifty. Just wanna give you all a heads up. That's actually under my forty thousand dollar limit, but I wanted to give you all a heads up on, maybe a suggestion on how you think I need to go. And it's probably a no-brainer at this point. They have got the money, the, the library has got the money there to do the roofing. They've got a, they've got a splosh. And the roof is gonna have to be fixed whether they bill on the building or not. And that, and if, when time comes and the state does, in their infinite wisdom, release the funds to add on to the libraries that they're doing the matching funds. Uh, if we can get some of our elected officials up and going, the, uh, the roof will not be deteriorating one way or the other. I mean, it's gotta be done. So I, uh, so I just wanna let you know on that one. And like I said earlier, that's under my forty thousand dollar limit. So might go ahead and get that thing done for winter time sets in and take care of that. So I just wanna give you all a heads up on it. And then get the insurance policy from, from the low bidder, which, uh...
Is the fountain roofing, the local guys?
Yeah. Fountain, well, most of these guys, what we pulled off, the way we got these names on this one, since I was doing, I went and pulled the ones that had business licenses in Pickens County.
Okay.
And that's how, that's how I pulled, that's how I pulled these names. And so I thought I'd at least give them, the local guys, the shop that's got business licenses here in Pickens County. All right. That brings us down to a generator for the health department. The generator, the district health department is on its last legs. We've had two companies bid on those. Of course, one of them is PSU Power Solutions. And their installed price for a new generator, it's a twenty-seven KW, is thirteen eight thirty-four. And then you see the accessory options underneath that. And also the one from Ginspring Power, coming in twelve nine nine eight point eighty-nine. They were doing that themselves. They sent me a copy of this. What I meant by that is the public health department was putting these bids out. And that's the two that they've got. Of course, they're wanting to know if, if Pickens County could help pay for the generator. Pretty much a little bit, so I kinda run it, once, again, wanna run it for y'all, do that. We definitely don't want their generator to go down the tubes on account of all the medications and, and stuff they have in there. On the other hand, I want to be sure you, y'all are aware of what they're asking as we go forward with that.
Are they asking up for a match or how do they?
No, I think they want us to pay.
Pay all of it?
Pay all of it. And that would be a question I haven't brought to Ms. Harvey yet on how that could be afforded. And, uh, and I haven't talked to Dalton, who is the regional office of the public health, to see if they've got any funds available. I haven't, haven't done that either at this time. I want y'all to get aware that we did receive this from them and let you know what's going on. So I will be in contact with them. I will be with, me and, me and Ms. Harvey will talk about it and I will be in touch with the, with the Dalton office to see if anything is available at that point forward. And I should be able to know something by the next Thursday, Thursday meeting on that one. All right. That brings us down to, uh, the Ludbrook Community Center. We have been approached by the nursing home down at Ludbrook. They would like to purchase the building, lease the building or whatever. Right now, Richard helping with this, I think right now the Ludbrook Community Center, if it's put out for bids and goes out to the public, it's a non-conforming lot, which means it's less than a half an acre. Way less than a half an acre. It's got a two-story building on it. And so the nursing home would like to have it for office space. The question I would have with it, that is our voting precinct. And I can have the county attorney to look at the fact that if we could pull this off with, we can put it out for bids or whatever they want to do, uh, lease it or something. But I would like to have a, a, a codicil, part of the, part of the deed, that that would still be used as a voting precinct for Ludbrook.
Isn't that used a lot by the community? Am I thinking of the same building?
You are thinking of the same building. Actually, it had the, it'd been empty.
Is it on the corner there?
As your first attorney.
There's a, there's a, no, it isn't. The community building. It was right on the corner.
It, I guess the, the thing about it is that the property joins the, the nursing home property, which then if that, if they were to work that out, then that would make it a, a usable lot for the future. And it would be, be a consistent lot with what the, what the regulations are with Pickens County and the, and the health, state health department. Wouldn't have some big heartache, heartburn over that one. Also, if, if it comes to fruition, I, like I said earlier, I'd like to keep that covenant or codicil in their, in their deed that that would still be used as a voting precinct for the future. Been in office since oh five, it's been a community center, but it never has been used. Henceforth, we have to keep the water, keep the water checked. We gotta keep propane tanks full, those type of issues. The nursing home wants it for, for office staff where they can, they're having so many elderly come in there and they need some more room in their, in the original building. They're not gonna move the, the people out to that. They're gonna use that for office and then take the office space into more, more holders, is what their plan is for the future. So we would, just something that y'all can consider as we go forward. And y'all too might wanna talk to, to the attorney, see how we can do it or if we wanna do it or whatever, whatever the issues are. I just want the building is, is really an asset for the area then, and I just don't, don't wanna go watch a sea going back into disrepair. Because you know, it was used as a boys and girls club there for a long time because it was sitting empty. And boys and girls club used it and they paid for all the gas, power and all that while they were using the building. Now they've got their own complex, now it's sitting empty again.
I was thinking of the Hampton, Hampton community.
Yeah. And we've already had one, we've already had one break-in in that, in that particular facility since it's been, been vacant. All right. That's what's going on there. The Village on Blackwell Creek. We have been, uh, we've got a letter from Curtis Proquet. Mr. Wayne Bruce and Curtis Proquet. Village of Blackwell Creek borders up to Big Canoe. Few years ago, they have, uh, when that thing was going into foreclosure and the, and the, and the feds and the, everybody else was going into a, a depression. That was some properties that had fallen into bankruptcy for what, for lack of a better term. These two individuals bought the property. Pickens County agreed to accept those water lines in there for, for maintenance purposes and to try to help get that property started. Now that that's gone, there's really nothing else going in there. But since some other things have happened in the area, they have requested that Pickens County give, gives that back to Curtis Proquet. They'd still be buying water from Pickens County in theory and, and give that water lines back to them. I really don't have a, a issue either way. Phillip, you, because there's, there's nothing going on in there at this time. And we take on the liability in, in there. So they were asking, and you can read the letter to that, if we could, you know, take care of that here and give these two individuals a, a notice that we can give that up. And I think Phil has got a, uh, amendment to certification of approval of water system behind that. Take care of that particular issue there. And they can bring water in from another direction if they so desire. All right. Any other questions on that? All right. That brings us down to general discussion. Have y'all got anything you would like to ask the employees of Pickens County? We have a new individual sit back here in the back that had to represent Smoke Singers. Glad to see Smoke Singers here. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Linda Harris. And I just, just joined, so I'm acclimating myself and getting to know people and marrying your one that she told me to, to meet. And so I'm just grateful to be here. I'm excited about it and I would love to talk to any of you about what's going on.
What is your, what is your process?
I'm a stringer for the news section. I'm helping, Barbara has taken over the news section in addition to all her managing editor duties. And so I'm just, right now I just have three assignments, three stories that I'm turning out.
Yeah, she's, uh, she's the new reporter for the Smoke Singers news back there. Good, I check in. All right. Anybody else got anything they need to let us know before we're dismissed? Guys, y'all, thank y'all for being here this morning. Get back to work.
Robert, I, I do have one. When can I know the decision on this? Because we're holding on a building per hand. So when can I know the decision on that?
Only thing I can do is as soon as these other two get back with me, give me some direction. No, we can't vote during work session. We can't, we cannot vote during work session. And this right here is the change of ordinance, that's why they had to be privy, privy to that fact. So that, that's, I'm trying to speed up the process, get you ahead of the game on that point. And so we'll, as soon as, as soon as, as soon as they take a look at it and they, they give me the, the go-ahead, we'll, we'll proceed on any call. You're welcome. All right. Any further questions or comments? Guys, let's get back at it. Thank y'all.